All right, welcome to Groveland Planner Board Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, April 2nd, 7:00 PM. Motion to open the meeting.
No motion. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, first up is new public hearing, 6-8 Elm Park, a public hearing in accordance with general law, Chapter 48, as amended for the application by Rod Rivera, 97 Beet Street, Walden. The premises located at 6-8 Elm Park, Groveland, map 10 lot 013, located in business B zoning district for a special permit and parking reduction in accordance to Section 50-9.4 and 50-14.6 of the Groveland zoning bylaw due to the increase of parking for operation of a restaurant. Okay, Andy, you want to get us started?
The applicant's here to present.
Mr. Rivera? Okay, anybody that speaks tonight, for or against, would have to please go out to the podium and use the microphone.
My name is Rod Rivera, and I'm also a construction supervisor and a designer. And they had hired me to help them with the project and also become part of the management team for this restaurant. Basically, what we're trying to do is turn an old piece of place into a family-oriented, more dining and a sports bar. And what we're asking is for a reduction on the parking space since we are limited in the place. It's already congested with the other neighbors in a sense. But I think the timeframe that we'll be having a place to open and people dining in, it'll work out, and I believe it'll work out well with no issues. So basically, the times that we are proposing is Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 AM, more or less lunchtime, to about 10:00 PM. And then Fridays and Saturdays, we would like to extend until 12:00 AM.
Any reduction, what's the reduction we're looking for?
So it's asked, it's by the, the bylaws is questioned, I believe it says, we came up with, it's one per four, so we came up with like 42 people in the, in the restaurant. So it's requiring 16 parking space, and we're asking for six parking spaces reduction.
How many employees?
We're going to have two in the kitchen and one in the bar area, and then there'll be one servant. But it's all family, so they'll have one vehicle coming in, which will be the mother, which is the lady on that side, she's going to be running the kitchen, and the son, which is the gentleman in the front. And then we'll have a different person coming in, which will probably be living locally because that's the whole idea. We're going to try to have somebody that would live nearby and be part of the staff, the waitress, or working in the bar for us.
So how many servers out on the floor?
For now, we have one. We would like to do one, depends the volume, once it gets started, but it'll probably be no more than two, and then one person at the bar.
So it potentially could be three?
Total, yes.
So, well, let's say it's thriving. Let's say you're up and running, so it potentially could be three, two on the floor, one in the bar, and then two cooks in the rear?
Correct.
So you're up to five, you could be potentially up to five.
Correct.
Worst case scenario, let's say that not everybody's coming in together, let's, you know, try to like reasonably park in spaces for the employees.
So the, and the other places that we have, because they own other places too, so basically a lot of the people just, they get dropped off.
If you're on Zoom, can you please review yourself? Thank you. Sorry.
So in the other places that they have, people just drive up and they get dropped off and they get picked up, whether the spouse or the wife.
Any managers?
It'd be me.
Okay, so you're, you'd be an additional?
So my position with them would be that I would come in, I would check up on, on the place, and then I will leave. And then, and the other places also, we do it the same way. So it's basically, I'll be there for two or three hours, and then I would take off.
Okay.
Somebody gets sick and you have to work?
Then things will, things will change, but you're right, you're right, things will change.
It, it happens, what are you going to do? Chris? Jason, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions for the applicant, no.
Anybody public like to speak?
Please.
Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Did you say you needed my name?
Yes.
Don Granny.
Sure.
Okay, so we have property in the square for the company I work for. So I know when we had come in for our tenants, all our tenants have to have in their lease the amount of spaces that they have on the property for parking, okay? I didn't hear any of that, as far as what they're presenting, but that building has the hairdresser in the back, it's got the Healthy Glow on the end and a laundromat, so you probably already have like 10 employees, you know, in that development. I think there's like 10 parking spaces total on the property, so I don't know what they're getting in their lease, because we had to provide all that information, you know, with our tenants. So we also can use the spaces in the square, you know, with our tenants. So there's nine spots in the center of town, there's no on-street parking, there's no parking across the street where the post office and gas station are. So I, I don't know, I don't want to see the people come in, spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then have to go out of business because nobody parks and nobody can get in there, so they don't come. You know, we had that problem with the other restaurant, they kept using our parking spaces, the town tried to use our parking spaces in their study. I don't know where they're coming up with another 20 parking spaces, that's what I'd like to know.
Andy, we have that study, did you put it in the package?
Yep.
Yes.
Did you get a chance to review?
So they're looking for 16 seats, 16 spaces?
Yeah. Is it Ron?
Rod.
Rod, did they give you a specific amount of spaces in your lease?
I'm sorry, I believe it was six in the front, because the building itself, well, the spaces is actually divided into two spaces, although it has an opening in the center of the wall, but I believe everything, it was like six spaces.
Public property, right.
So that parking lot is town property?
Right.
His is behind the building, where the dumpsters are, Family Affairs.
That's on the microphone.
Those are the only parking spaces with that building. Oh, thank you. Yeah, the only parking spaces with that building, if you look at the layout of their plan, is behind the building. They don't own the parking spaces in front.
Right, well, it's my understanding that none of the businesses on the street own the parking spaces, correct?
Right.
Right, so they're shared spaces?
Municipal.
Right, okay. According to the parking study that was done in Elm Square, there's a total of 192 spaces available for Elm Square.
192.
I wonder where, must be on the lawns of people's houses.
I believe it's counted over the public parking.
Right. The municipal, I think the water department, municipal parking, but there's not 100.
In the bylaw, aren't you supposed to be within 500 feet if you're sharing municipal spots with a business?
How far is the water department away from that? I think it's less than 500. Are you sure? We do have dialogue from the chief. No parking on 113 and 97.
Yeah. They didn't line any parking spaces on the backside of Elm Park either. I mean, if they made that one way, they could probably get 10 in there, but again, it's not made that way, so you can't just guess.
Yeah, I mean, as far as parking on the streets go, I think we need to give the citizens of Groveland the benefit of the doubt that they won't park illegally, so, and you know, the chief's comments are noted, but I'd like to think that illegal parking will not be a problem.
I don't think anyone's going to park on 113 and 97, I mean, that's self-explanatory, I would hope.
I, I mean, if you go back to the master plan that the town did before, their expectation was every house on Pleasant over to Union Street that would all be bought up and made into businesses, and it would be like Little Newbury Port, but that never happened.
That never happened, it's... But there's a new master plan.
How did it wait?
Oh, we saw it, so.
Is there anyone else for a public comment? Please, sir.
So, my name is Michael Anderson, and I own the property at 282 Main Street, which is up the street from the center of town, and going, it's adjacent to the bank. So Groveland has always been no parking problem, like, since I've lived in this town. And I came to the meeting just to hear what the hours were going to be, and I just found out tonight, because I didn't do any research on this at all, that they're entertaining a sports bar. And then we're hearing there's no on-street parking because that's illegal on 97 and 113?
Correct.
There's, I mean, I don't really see any signage telling you you can't do that for parking, but I guess that's, that's what it is. As far as the main roads go, I don't, I don't know, but my concern is I don't want to end up with spillover of people who want to park thinking they're going to be able to park in my parking lot. So that's, that's going to be a no-no. I mean, I don't want to be responsible for trying to, you know, or be my responsibility to come up with signage, telling people not to park here. I mean, I just don't want to get into having to tow cars. I mean, I grew up in this town, I don't want my, you know, people that I know and stuff, I'm having their car towed out of my lot, you know, this kind of thing, so.
As far as the hours, we haven't, that'll be in zoning.
Right, exactly.
So we haven't, nobody's given the okay on, on the hours.
I mean, as far as, as far as overflowing to your lot, was that a problem with the previous establishment?
No, because the sub shop that was there, I mean, there's been a sub shop there since I've been here.
10 hours.
So there's been, but it was still, they had sit-down seating though?
Yeah, but they didn't have many seats.
Yeah, but it was.
Four seats.
Twenty-four.
They have 24?
Four seats, yeah.
Yeah, but nobody really accessed that. It's kind of like the tea garden, you know, it's takeout, it's, you're in, you're out.
Tea gardens got plenty of their own parking.
Well, right, but you know, there's no hanging around. I mean, a sports bar is, well, you know, what's the definition of a sports bar? Watch TV, hang out, watch a game, get hammered, whatever, I don't know. And then I got people that are staggering around in my parking lot or whatever, that's going to be the situation.
Right.
You know, I don't need that happening, or fights in my parking lot, or cops showing up, or any of that crap.
Right, I mean, I think, again, I think we need to give the residents of Groveland the benefit of the doubt that they're not going to be getting drunk and getting in fights in public property, right? Or the people's private property.
Never know.
Right.
Hard to say.
I mean.
Not everybody's going to be a resident of Groveland either.
Yeah, that's right.
No, right, but I mean, I don't know that we can rule in, you know, because of...
Well, that's the thing, we don't know who's going to show up to this sports bar.
This is still preliminary.
Well, I understand.
This is basically a discussion, which is good to have.
I'm just throwing it out there that I'm not going to accept people parking in my parking lot.
I think, I think that's a reasonable expectation.
All right.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else here?
So, do we want to close the public comment? The property, I just have some random questions. So the property itself has nine parking spots, and the 12 out of the, out of the front are public parking, not site parking?
Correct.
But you also have three other tenants in that building.
Right, right, that's actually what I was going to say, which, how many are signed per tenant do they have?
When he mentioned he thought he was getting six with the lease, but you know, if you look at the hairdresser, they must have six people working there, that would eat up six parking spaces already a negative.
So here's what I think we should do, we'll close the public comment at this point. I think we should have Rod come in with actually what he's getting, right?
We should know what the whole facility, we should know what the whole facility has.
It should be, it should be in writing.
The building owner should come.
Right, the building owner should come, it should be in writing, we should know exactly, I think, if you're getting two, if you're getting six, we should have basically of who's got what at that time, because if he's saying you've got six, and the hairdresser down there, she's got four, it's not adding up. That's 10, you got eight. Right, you still have a laundromat, a jewelry store, and...
Right, but, but again, that same expectation was there for the previous restaurant. Again, slightly different restaurant, granted, but it was still a restaurant that had the expectation of patrons that would come there and sit down and eat a meal.
So what was the other, what was the other restaurant at 24 seats?
It was, so it was zoned for 24 seats.
What was this one zoned, what seat are you looking for?
Sixty.
Forty-two. Forty-two seats.
No, they're talking about...
Seats.
Total seats, 24 to 42 seats.
So it could be an increase in seats, 24 to 42, it almost doubles.
It's addition, it's an addition of four and a half spots over the last restaurant that was there.
All right, so again, I think, you know, for me, if we're talking about four and a half spots, and there's 147 publicly available parking spaces in Elm Square, I mean, I'm not sure really what, what the debate is, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, let's see what the, let's see what the lease says.
But again, even regardless of what the lease says, I mean, I think we've talked about in the past that, you know, that municipal lot in Elm Square services the entire square.
And if Don's right, I'd like to see what the bylaw is. I don't remember.
On what?
On the 500 feet.
It is 500 feet, and I just measured, it's about, just to make you with a walk, so not by, by the crow, it's 1,100 feet.
But is it by, so by walk or by crow, correct?
Um, it doesn't specify whether it's walking or by.
Crow's fly?
Crow's fly, if it's crow, it's a thousand, it doesn't make much of a difference.
Unless he's going to shuttle people from that municipal lot over to his restaurant.
I heard that with Shan's restaurant before, they were going to do that, oh no, actually it was the gas station.
Correct.
They were going to shuttle people, and they realized that they couldn't make it, make it work based on the amount of parking and to have patrons.
Get the zone aborted.
That's actually not true, that parking was approved.
Yes.
But he knew he didn't have enough spaces.
But it was approved.
But worked out to his benefit because it was approved.
Yeah, I mean, again, I've said it again, you know, if you go to, if you go to a restaurant in most communities, you're in no way parking within 500 feet of the restaurant. If you go to the Newbury Port, just to say, say neighboring down, I went to dinner there last week, you're not parking 500 feet from the restaurant, you're parking in a lot, and then you're walking to the restaurant. I think, I think for a matter of four spaces, that, that should be in agreeable, in my, in my eyes.
I hear what you're saying, I'd like to see what his lease said, I want to see what they're giving him for parking spaces, let's do the math on the tenants that are there, you don't want to, you know, rock the boat for the other people that are there. And then let's take a look at what's, what's within 500 feet, or what's within the bylaw. And I, you know, if you go to the, let's say if you go to the Black Island, you're parking that parking lot, you're only like 100 feet away. But if you want to go in another lot, and you want to walk around, that's something else.
Right.
You know, but we have a bylaw.
Right.
So we almost, we have to adhere to that bylaw that says within 500 feet.
Anybody know the hours of the salon?
They close at 5.
I have a good question.
So during peak time, that most likely would be of access, majority of that lot.
Look what happened, I have an internet machine at my fingers here.
Did you need the hours? It's Tuesday, they're closed, Monday from 9 to 5, Wednesday 9 to 3, Thursday 12:30 to 7:30, Friday 9 to 4, Saturday 8 to 4.
Oh, yeah, and then...
The laundromat, geez, you guys should know this stuff.
We got you, Don, so we...
And then on top of that, you still have the 12 spaces up front, 14 up and down.
The laundromat is open 5:30 AM till 9:00 PM every day, and Healthy Glow is open Monday 9 to 8, actually Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday 9 to 8, Friday 9 to 6, Saturday 8:30 to 4, Sunday 10 to 4. John Vowles, I wouldn't even count them because they have their own parking lot, but, you know, same thing. The one across the street, they're open the same hours, the two, hairdresser and beauty salon there. The gymnastics, they're randomly open, so.
That's a private lot, though.
Yeah, they have a lot, they have a lot in back, right?
Yeah, those are all on our property, all of them.
Right, so that's his...
Yeah.
You know, 100, how many did you say there are in Elm Park?
According to the study...
We're not saying it, it's actually showing.
They must be counting people's driveways and garages.
All right, I'm going to give benefit of the doubt to the people we commissioned to do the study that they did the study correctly.
192 spaces.
147 publicly, publicly available.
Andy, can you get that over to Don?
On the, I mean, that'll take me like five minutes.
Hold on, just email it.
Oh, they did the study, what, 2017, 18?
So the salon, we're talking John Vowle?
They got their own parking.
Their own, okay, there's no other salon that's...
There is another salon at the other end, on the 113 end, I forget the name.
That part of that building?
Family Affairs, is it? Yeah, Family Affairs.
That's set part of the same building?
That's where the parking lot is.
Correct, there's a dumpster, there's a big dumpster there.
Oh, that's the nine spots on that, I was looking at the other way, I apologize. I was wondering where those nine spots were.
That should be the 12 spots listed on the parking study.
They're going to have, they're going to have to add a dumpster as well for their business.
So where are you going to put the dumpster?
But, but the, the previous tenant would have also had a dumpster on property, right?
I don't know, I wasn't here to, that was 34 years ago, I was...
No, I mean, the restaurant that just closed down. They would have to have had.
Right.
I would have think, what?
Where was their dumpster?
Right, well, I mean, I mean, I mean...
It was right behind the laundromat, right in the parking lot, they had two on that end, now they have two up the other end, they have the clothing one and another dumpster, I don't know whose that is, it's probably Family Affairs.
It could be, it could be all the other tenants.
You have a copy of the site plan?
Yes.
Rod, no, Rod.
Yes, I do.
Can you mark where your dumpster locations are going to be for the next, next time we...
Okay.
I'd like to know this, exactly what your lease agreement is going to say for what parking spaces you have. And then, I know what you're saying, but we have a bylaw, and we got to figure out where the parking spaces would be within 500 feet, you know.
We have a bylaw, but he's, he's coming in for a special permit to reduce the parking, that's what we're here for, is to reduce the parking, and the reduction in parking is four and a half spots.
But he has to show us where those four and a half spots are going to be, even if we have 147 spots.
You'd have to have 16 to start with to reduce four and a half.
Correct, so you're going to need 20, 21, 22. And there's going to be an overlap with some of the other businesses that are there. So I don't think making a decision tonight, you know, let's not pounce on this, let's digest what's going on.
Also for clarification, the prior, your, your place and ours, the pizza place that was there before, since it had been there for the 30 however many years, they didn't have to go through a parking reduction special permit, just so there's, so the board's aware.
It's a different kind of restaurant too, that was mostly takeout?
Oh no, I'm aware, I'm just letting the board know, so it's not like a reduction was given for that that we can kind of reference, unfortunately, we don't have...
Did they, do you know if they met the requirement for the 24 seats?
Um, I take my calculator out quickly, one second. Um, they usually had about three folks working there, if my memory serves me right.
Three or four, depending on the weekends or...
We'll call it four, so they needed 10 parking spaces.
There's 12 up front.
That was, that was their required amount of spaces.
But again, that's just one section of the building. You've got four tenants using 10 spaces.
Yeah, I say let's put it back, you know, on Mr. Rivera, let's see what the lease agreement says.
All right, so why don't we, we want to fly a motion to table till the next meeting?
Yeah, let's also take a look at the bylaw, let's see what the 147 spaces, where they are within, let's find out where they are within 500 feet. We know the municipal, municipal lot is 1,100 feet away, so you count that out. We've got a little bit of homework to do.
I mean, the owner, the leasee shouldn't, the leaser should not be able to give more spots than he has available.
Oh, you can.
So that would be my question, is like, how many are you allotting towards each business, right? You would, does it divide this four businesses total?
Yep.
So...
I agree. So when...
Probably noncompliant if you can handle it.
Correct.
Because mixed-use hours, right, so everyone's kind of using different spots, different times.
But they're going to dovetail in the hours, you know, you just heard, seven, you know, nine to 10, 7 to 3, 7 to 7, 9 to 7, they're going to be, their peak hours are probably going to be somewhere between 5 and 9, right? Or 5 and 8.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's in reality.
I would imagine if it's a restaurant, their peak hours are going to be somewhere between 5 and 9.
I would agree.
You know?
So, so it's probably, so there's...
Correct.
Right, so there's probably not, not going to be a whole lot of overlap, to be honest. It could be, I mean, you could have lunch, a lunch...
Don, what time do you eat?
Is he lunch as well?
I've been eating around 5:30.
Okay, that's a good gauge. So I think we should move this to the next meeting. I think Rod, Mr. Rivera's got a little bit of homework to do, I think if you want to bring in the owner, or if you, if he wants to show us where these other designated spots are, and then we're going to have to...
For each tenant, really, because there's nine spots.
For each tenant, and we're going to give you...
Well, I mean, I don't know if we should put the burden on each tenant on Mr. Rivera.
It made us do it, I mean, we had to have laid out parking, had it written in each lease, how many spaces.
Yeah, but this isn't, this is not, you don't need a full-blown site plan for this.
We had to.
This is considered a minor site plan.
Right.
This will be considered a minor site plan review, which they didn't do, which was my mistake, I should have advised them that they should have done that. I should have advised them that they should have done that, but because it's, does not exceed 2,000 square feet or an additional 10 parking spaces to the previous use, it's a minor site plan review rather than the full site plan review.
So just so Mr. Rivera has, has his marching orders, is, is he responsible for pulling the details on where every other business needs to, has their parking, or just where his proposed business has their parking?
Let the owner do that. Let the owner mark it down.
No, right, but I mean, as far as Mr. Rivera's role in bringing in the information to the board.
Yeah, well, I want to see where it is. I would think that you guys would want to see where it is.
No, right, but as far as where his, where his lease is going to de-damn parking, right?
Right. Where the dumpsters are potentially going to be. If they're going to be in parking spaces, you're going to, you're going to lose spaces.
Now, is that what the zoning board would be having all in their layout?
Correct. Zoning board will cover dumpster location.
Right.
Yep.
But we'd want to see it as well.
I think so.
Couple of us are on both boards.
So, Mr. Rivera, your assumption is with your lease comes six spots? Okay. So that, I mean, that leaves nine, that leaves three of the remaining spots, right? Because he can't give any additional spots other than this, any that's in the nine spots in the, in the building. Public spots don't count, correct?
He can't grant any of the public spots.
Besides those nine.
Anyone can obviously use them, but they cannot be.
Right, they can't be, we're going to use all these, they can't. This would be part of the 147, I would take it, right?
Yeah.
The spots up front would have to be one, part of the 147.
I would presume so, yeah.
And that's within 500 feet.
In the, with the parking for Elm Street, Elm Park parking?
Elm Park.
You, that's private, that's private property. How can you?
No, no, I mean the parking lot.
No, that's public property.
Oh, the 12 squads. Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
So what we, you were saying that, Mr. Rivera?
I was asking, so his lease, he believes, has six spots and there's only nine in that location. Private spots.
We're going to have to.
So I'm interested to see how many, at least, I mean, Heart of Stone has got to have at least one employee there at all times.
Correct.
Same with the, um, laundromat, one. And then the hair salon.
Ah, could be four.
Could be four, who knows?
Is it is?
But they could be deeded for, so it just, you're only leaving three additional spots.
Correct.
For the remainder of the building. I don't know how.
There's going to be two or three employees, so they get down to zero.
Maybe that's the change of their lease. Maybe they only get one each. I, I don't know.
That's, right, that would be.
Employees get one spot and the other tenants and you get six. I don't know. I would just be like to confirm that, to go, to go from there.
All right, so I motion to move this to the next meeting.
Yes.
For the next meeting?
Um. It would be April 16.
So let's, uh, anybody want to fly a motion, or I just did?
I won't be here that day. I thought we moved it out the, to the 23rd, no. I'm not available the 16th.
I'm okay that day.
It's school vacation week.
Oh.
True.
Where are you going?
Um, let me take a quick look at the calendar, one second, just because it's our off week, so I want to make sure no other board or commission, for the, I'm looking for the 23rd.
And just so everyone knows, it does not revolve around me, it's just a limited board and we have to have a quorum in order to have a meeting, so that's why it's discussed.
Somebody doesn't show.
We got to make sure we have enough people. We don't want you here and then us not have, cancel the meeting last minute.
Yep, so, um, the 23rd is available if the board wants to do it then, rather than the 16th.
I'm okay with that. Jason, you all right with that?
Yeah, it works for me.
We'll fly a motion to move this to the 23rd of April.
Table it, table it.
Table it to the next meeting.
Table it to the 23rd of April.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you on the 23rd. And the parking spaces? We're going to see the dumpster in the zoning board. The zoning board could share it with us. I mean, if you want, I mean, it would be, if it's going to be in the parking, then yes, we would probably want to see it.
Okay. Yeah, I'd say only if it impacts your parking permit request.
Okay.
I would have to assume with a restaurant, they already had a restaurant with 24 seats. They already have an existing dumpster. It would be up to you if they only are allotted for a five yard or, you know, it can't be a 10 yard, it's too big, whatever. You would just have to have more pickups per week is all it really would end up happening, if you filled it up faster than, but that's up to you. But is, I would assume it's still already a designated spot for that, but I'd still, it'd be good to see it. I'm sure it's still there.
34, 40 years ago, we didn't have any parking restrictions or reductions or, you know, was what it, it is what it is, you know?
No, I'm talking about the dumpster, like where the dumpster. Yeah, I think, I think, I think we're saying, it's safe to assume the dumpster wasn't taking up a parking spot before.
I don't know, I never really saw the location of the dumpster. Was it taking up a parking spot? I would imagine it's, it's pretty much of a tight site. There's only so places, so many places you can put a dumpster. Is there going to be one dumpster or two dumpsters? One. Is there a grease?
You guys already continued this. We need to stop.
We'll see you on the 23rd.
Okay.
All right, next up. 9:29 to 9:31 Salem Street, project update.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen David. I represent Anfa LLC, which is the owner. With me this evening is Angelo Chidello, who is the contractor at the site. I do have the structural engineer on Zoom. He's saying he wasn't hearing anything, as well as my client. If we could just. We all set? Yeah.
You should be. Chris or Meredith, can you give us a thumbs up or something to let us know if you can hear us? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, listening on, as an update, I could give you just a quick update and then take any questions that the, the board might have relative to the status of the project, if that's all right with you?
Go ahead.
Okay. So basically, on the 28th last week, TEC sent two additional comments relative to their, their, the status of the sign-off on the, uh, the structural plan. Our structural engineer responded to them this morning. I believe you have the letter of the 28th as well as his response. I'm sure you haven't had much time to look at that. It would appear that that's winding down. Hopefully, TEC will be able to look at his final comments. He's here to comment on it if you'd like, in which case, if TC signs off, then this project can move forward. Relative to permits, the SP 101, which is the application signed with the state fire marshal, has been filed. I talked to Comp Tank, who is our tank installer and pump installer. They expect a decision from the, the fire marshal, hopefully by the end of the week, the latest, the beginning of next week. We are also coming before the selectmen on April 8th for a license to use the tanks, which is under the authority of the selectmen. That's been filed. Public notice has been given out and we'll be back here on the 8th next week. Hopefully get a favorable ruling from the selectmen that allows us to, between the state fire marshal and the selectmen, that allows us to move forward and install the tanks in the vault. This is a concrete vault, as you both know.
Your mic's muted. Can you just make sure it's green?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
This allows us to install the tanks. Comp Tank is installing them now. So what's left to do with the vault is.
Oh, wait, it was on Zoom, sorry. I'm getting messages from someone. I think you're all, I might have, okay.
Yeah.
He's, he's, he's on there. I.
Just getting messages from someone that gets muted on Zoom.
Can people on Zoom give us a thumbs up or thumbs down if you can or cannot hear us?
I would take that as a thumbs down.
Meredith, can you hear us? Oh, okay.
I guess we have to talk loud.
Muted, so she couldn't hear you.
Yeah, he probably doesn't have a camera on his laptop or something. That's why we don't see him. So what's, what's left to be done on the vault is to pour the walls, pour the wall going down the center of the vault. And then the tanks would be installed. After the tanks were installed, we would then pour the cap over the vault. And then the rest is just connecting, connecting to the fuel tanks. There is presently a stop work order, as you know, from Mr. Jocelyn. We've complied with everything that he had asked us to do but for the final sign-off from TEC. So once TEC signs off, the expectation would be that Mr. Jocelyn would remove the stop work order and that we, Mr. Chidello is ready to continue with the project and, and complete it. If that were to happen, the expectation would be to be installing the tanks probably within seven or 10 days. That's the update. We, we have for questions, anything you'd like to ask any of us?
How do we get to this point? You know, we issued a decision, it was a pretty explicit decision about structural, having our site plan review engineer on site. How do we start the project without a permit, proceed without a permit?
I, I can, I can address those.
I mean, why did anybody just avoid our decision? I mean, take it lightly?
So I did, I did file a building permit with Mr. Jocelyn before the work began. I think you're referring to, I think you're referring to the fact that we hadn't gotten the sign-off from TEC and you're absolutely correct. This is a kind of a challenging project. An underground concrete tank vault is a very unusual method for storing fuel tanks. I wasn't familiar with some of it. I'll take responsibility for the fact that that permit was not pulled. As far as what went on prior to the pouring of the slab, I mean, Mr. Chidello excavated the site. I mean, Mr. Jocelyn knew about the excavation. I believe we had a permit at the time, a building permit pending with his office. Pending, we didn't have the permit anyhow. Mr. Jocelyn inspected the hole after it was, as, as you have to before you can pull, put any type of foundation. So that was, that was followed. Prior to the pour of the slab, Mr. Kirby came out to the site, inspected the rebar, inspected the hole. The next day after the slab was poured, Mr. Jocelyn received from us a stamped plan from Mr. Kirby, our structural engineer, as well as a narrative indicating that all the work done on the slab was compliant with the plan as well as the structural integrity model, whatever. At that point, we stopped working. So in this special permit, you're right, Mr. Chairman, there is a clause in there that the peer reviewer, whoever that might be, I don't know if we knew if it was TEC at the time. It was TEC, would be there to observe the pour. You're absolutely correct.
How do that, so what do we do to rectify?
Well, so we provided TEC with the information relative to the pour. Mr. Chidello got information from the concrete company. I believe Mr. Kirby sent them over either a narrative or a plan relative to the integrity of the slab. And I, I haven't seen anything from TEC to challenge that at all. I could be mistaken, but I read these things pretty thoroughly.
But, but just so we're clear, at the time the slab was poured, basically the, the site did not have approval to do so. Right? Right?
Wasn't permitted. With TEC, also TEC.
Well, I, I would say that TEC did not.
Finished their comments.
Correct. That is correct.
So they're finishing, they still haven't finished their comments.
Right.
Well, their comments aren't related to the slab. I'm just letting you know, when you go to read that, it's, it's, it's not about the slab. It's about the pouring of the, excuse me, the top of the vault, which hasn't occurred yet, obviously.
So was it done the way it was supposed to be done and how do we know that?
Well, we know that.
Well, let me just finish, please.
Sure.
If we don't have TEC witnessing the pour, and this is a zone two aquifer, so this can't, this shouldn't be taken lightly. You know, digging a hole, putting a structural feature in, and, you know, this is our drinking water. I live here. I don't think you live here, but I'm, you know, I want to make sure it's done right and that's why we took the time to make and write the decision and put the perimeters in that were necessary, because I, we also had a screw, valley screw up the street. Was a hazmat site for years and we don't, you know, we didn't have to approve it, but we did and we put the perimeters in where, we put the perimeters in so this wouldn't happen again. And right off the get-go, we've got a problem.
Well, I, I don't see it as a problem. I mean, the, the, our structural engineer who designed the vault came out prior to the pour and checked not only the ground, but the rebar and everything that was done by Mr. Chidelli and his workers. Mr. Jocelyn had inspected the hole. He was actually there on the day of the pour and.
Well, I believe just, I believe he was there on the day of the pour because he was called to go there because you were pouring in violation of the ruling.
In violation of a cease and desist order.
That's correct.
Because it was, because there was a cease and desist, which was disregarded, and then there was a second cease and desist issued. So, so to be clear, the problem isn't with your, your structural engineer's finding. The problem's with the process as laid up by the approval not being followed by the crew who's doing the work that was approved to do.
Well, I think, I think I've already addressed that and apologized.
But Mr. Jocelyn is not an engineer. He's a building inspector.
No, but he has an obligation to inspect the hole for any foundation and make sure the soil beneath the hole is, 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 is natural and can support the, whatever structure you're putting there. So that, that was, that, I, I agree with you.
The compaction ratios?
He's not a structural engineer. He has a limited function there. All I'm saying to you, he was present that day.
Right, only because of the phone calls that came in, because the pumper was there.
That's correct.
It was a cease and desist and there was multiple concrete trucks that.
You began, you began by attacking sort of the integrity of the work that has been done, and I'm trying to respond.
I'm not attacking the integrity of the work. How do we know that the integrity of the work is the way it's supposed to be per our TEC peer review engineer?
Well, you know that because our structural engineer, the next day, provided a narrative and a stamped plan, which we uploaded on Mr. Jocelyn's site, and that information was also, I believe that Annie forwarded that information to TEC. They have not indicated in any of their commentary since that time, any problems with the slab. I'm just, that's just a fact. I'm not, that's how you know. If the, if TEC had concerns about that, I'm sure we would have heard from them. This slab was poured three weeks ago.
We still haven't seen the comments about are they going to sign off on a unwitnessed slab?
Well, I, I've had, there's been no dialogue relative to that issue, so I mean, you're, it's your peer reviewer, so I mean, certainly you can inquire them. I haven't.
Right.
It hasn't come up.
Well, again, I think that's the board's issue, is that we stipulated that as part of the approval, our peer review witnessed the pour so that we could be certain about how it was done, that it was done the right way, and that was flagrantly disregarded.
It was disregarded.
Flagrantly.
I wasn't there. I can't, I can't comment on whether it was.
Yeah, I mean, we wanted to.
Mr. Chidelli wants to comment on it and.
Can you stand up the microphone, please? Thank you.
At the time when the work was done, we had no idea TEC had overlooked this job, but when we went forward doing the work as plans from the structural engineer, all the rebar was put in and Chris Kirby, the structural engineer, took pictures of all the rebar. We, we gave TEC the submittals for the concrete we used that was called for on the plan. And that's the only part of the job that really was done, which has pictures of every rebar in, in the concrete and also the submittals of the concrete and the thickness that you can measure, you know what I'm saying? You know, it's still there, the slab is still there. And pretty much all the rebar coming out of the slab to catch the walls is all there and all by pictures, it's all there.
Did you have like a third-party peer review, like UTS come in, check out the rebar? Was there poly underneath for the pour, like we put in the design? Was there concrete testing? Well, three day, seven day, 30 day? Was that done by like a UTS as well? I mean, the.
That was the only thing that wasn't done about the, the concrete, because that's why we get, after the fact, we gave them the submittals so they know what kind of concrete was put there. And, you know, by the submittals, yes, they didn't take the sample, I, I understand that, but with the submittals, the concrete company could tell you that's. But with the submittals, the concrete company could tell you that's the exact concrete you put back in there.
There's also a stress test on. There's also, you know, every, I get it. I mean, I'm a developer and I, I happen to be pretty good versed in fuel. So, when we do concrete work, we do, we have a third party company come in, do the rebar inspections, make sure everything's tied correctly. We make sure it's the correct rebar. We make sure it's the right underlayment, the poly that needs to be under there if it's poly at the time. We also do a soil compaction ratio test. And then when we do the, you know, they'll take cylinders of the concrete and they'll do testing to make sure that it's the right viscosity. It's, it's under stress and it's, if there's a crack, they'll make reports of it, what happens to it.
So, as you know, I'm, I'm new here to the, and I was not around when the decision was made to do this work.
I was.
Was that part of the decision for those things specifically called out to monitor? Or is that something that people do on their own?
That's always, that's a best practice.
Best practice, but it's not a requirement. It wasn't something that was a requirement.
You know what? T E C never came out with their comments. So, the chance, so T E C would have been making the comments or the dialogue. You know, they would have said concrete testing. They would have said rebar testing. So, T E C never had the chance to make those comments because it was already, it was already done.
So, and.
I would think so, you know, I would bet 99% that you're going to have to do, you would have to do that. There'd have to be a different, you know, a review and agent looking at the rebar and testing the concrete.
So, to start from, from the beginning, seeing it all unfold, coming in as a new member, from my understanding is T E C was supposed to be there for a peer review at any, at the start of the project. From start, from even the excavation. So, the first thing you said was the excavation. You had a permit submitted. It was pending, but it wasn't ever.
T E C's had these, these plans, these structural plans since, I mean, I started my dialogue with Annie last September.
But I'm talking onsite. But did you have a signed permit to proceed? So, for excavating, excavating.
We had a special permit and then I had.
That's not, it's not a building permit.
I know, I know, I know. But, and we had applied for a building permit with Sam's department. I had uploaded an application.
So, you had a pen.
Not have the permit in hand as I indicated in my prior response.
I just, I'm just trying to get, I just want to get a timeline. So, it was a pending for excavation. It was, it was submitted, but it was still pending. It wasn't.
Correct.
It wasn't complete.
Correct.
And then the excavation happened prior to it being a signed license.
I believe Mr. Jocelyn said it was okay to dig the hole. I mean.
No, he gave me permission to dig the hole.
Well, no, so what I understand is the hole was dug. He gave them permission to sink the metal.
Yeah, that's correct. Steel sheathing.
The steel sheathing. To finish that and that's it.
Was there supposed to be T E C peer review there when they were doing the excavating? I thought I were hearing that comment because of the placement of the hole because of the aquifer.
Well, we're not even, we're not even sure. So, was the hole pinned? Do they pin the, where it's going?
Yes, what we did is.
It was.
Yes, we did the sheathing. They pinned the hole.
No, no, no. Did an engineer come out and.
Surveyor.
Surveyor. Is it in the right spot because of the?
In the right spot. Yeah.
Were we supposed to, was, T E C supposed to be there for that dig to make sure it was done properly?
No, I think T E C.
That's what I'm asking about the decision. That's why I'm asking.
They were supposed to witness the pour.
Yeah, they usually.
Just the slab.
In the normal practice, which Mr. Chairman said it right, usually T E C comes out, inspects the rebar, inspects the pour and, but that didn't happen. But the photos, you could see very clearly what rebar is there.
Yep.
It was, it went to that point.
Yeah, T E C has all that information. That's why I was suggesting if it had become an issue that it would have been, this dialogue has been going back with T E C for the last several months in terms of between Mr. Kirby and T E C, not, not with me, in terms of comments they have about the plan. And that hasn't not come up from what I've seen.
So, it was, the issue was the sheathing first and then the slab pour. Those are the two instances.
They started without the permit.
Those are the two instances we've had issues with.
Nice guy that he is.
Correct. No, I get.
Go ahead.
I remember those.
Stabilize, stabilize the hole.
Sam was very nice to us, very, very nice to us.
So, those that not, it wasn't the excavating. It was the sheathing and then the slab pour.
Sheathing is just put in to prevent.
Yeah, he told us to go ahead.
But those are the two things that shouldn't have happened without someone else there. And he then allowed you to be, he allowed you to do it.
T E C wouldn't have been here to.
So, so, so they, so they started with the hole, with the sheathing. They didn't have a signed permission to continue with that. What Sam said was finish what you're doing and issue the stop work order at that point for anything else. So, that was a permitting thing? Okay. Then they continued to go past that initial stop work order to do the pouring. And then the pouring was supposed to be monitored. Right.
Well, the hole had to be prepped before the pour. So, I mean, I have photos if you.
Right. And then, yeah, the pouring was supposed to have been witnessed by T E C to ensure that it was how the, how the initial approval.
So, DJ, the, the walls will get poured. The sheathing gets pulled out.
Yeah.
Tanks go in. I don't know if they're going to pipe it. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts.
Absolutely. Yeah.
There's, even the screws that you use with this stuff has to be, it can't rot out. You know, it's got to be not dissimilar metal, not dissimilar metals. I mean, there's a lot to it. There's a.
I'm familiar with some excavation stuff, right? Not this specifically. My point was that I, there were two, two things that came before us telling us, hey, this job site has done. I've had to go there, allow them to do the work, still kind of slap on the wrist because Sam is a great guy to be able to allow you to do that. And, you know, that, fool me once, shame on me. Fool me twice, shame on you. Right? So, I, I was a little irritated by that part of it. It's like, why are we, why did we not learn from the first time? Now we're in the second time. I really hope it doesn't happen again. I hope that you guys are all in sync. I want to make sure that the site is done properly and that we have all the proper sign offs. That's, that is the main, the main point.
I couldn't agree more. I, I just want to suggest that Mr. Kirby would not have stamped the plan and given a narrative to T E C as well as Mr. Jocelyn. I mean, his stamp's at risk and basically he's indicated in those documents that the work that should not have been done as you articulated was done compliant. Beats the requirements not only under the plan, but, you know, engineering, structural engineering, whatever. I'm not a structural engineer, so.
No, and I don't think anyone's questioning Mr. Kirby's competency in any, in any way.
Thank you.
But, but again, you know, I think our issue comes from adherence to the process rather than anything else, right?
Understood.
Yeah, which, which comes down to, you know, you know, our concerns about when's the next time something's going to happen before it's been approved, even though, even if there might be dialogue ongoing about it, that all of a sudden we go by and there's more trucks there when we're, when we're not expecting trucks there. Right?
Well, again, I, I believe that as soon, as soon as we get the response from T E C, my expectation is that there's just, there's few minor things. We've addressed those. We're hoping they accept those. And at that point, Mr. Jocelyn, that, that's the only thing that's, I believe, holding up the actual permit.
We still got a fire marshal permit to deal with too.
That's correct. That's pending. We should have the fire marshal, the, the local chief signed off. It's been filed. We're just waiting for them to approve it. And like I said, we're back on the 8th for the license to store, to store the fuel underground.
So, the letter here, and now my last point is, are we up to date with T E C? And I'm, I'm seeing the letter here from the 28th with a couple of comments that are things that are partially addressed. And then there's the no response to those. Have those been addressed?
Well, I have the response. It was.
Okay. Is that what from, is that what this Kirby letter is? I think I have it here. This, okay. That's the responses to these partial comments from the 28th. Okay.
And as you can see in the March 28th, two out of the four, T E C says it's been addressed. And it was just two more dangling comments that Mr. Kirby forwarded the April 2nd, 2024 letter this morning, mid, midday. And I sent it over to Annie so he could forward it, she could forward it to T E C.
So, now we have to wait for T E C to get back and agree with what they have.
They got back to us today, but we haven't, no?
No, we just got this today. So.
I just, I sent this to T E C this afternoon. They haven't gotten back to me on it yet.
They'll need time to go through it.
Usually takes several days.
So, you, so you know what happened? The original, I think the original plan was just to bury the tanks in sand. We figured out it was two, zone two aquifer. And I don't know if Kirby was the engineer, the original engineer. So, the original engineer, I mean, that's a dangling fruit. It's zone two aquifer. Tanks are supposed to be quote underground, I mean, above ground. Well, he came in with engineers and he came in with consultants, said, we're going to vault it. We're going to put the tanks in the ground in a vault structurally designed. And that's going to be considered above ground. There's going to be annual inspections. All the piping has to be done correctly. And on top of it, the original decision, if you look at the original decision where I first came into the board, I wasn't even part of the decision. If you read the original decision, he's not even supposed to have been open until it was 100% complete. So, that gas station would have had to have the pumps in, everything, the grocery store or whatever, you know, wherever the front store is. We let them open. We gave them a temporary C O, you know, and a new decision on the tanks. And I, I feel like it was like a slap in the face. You know, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Chris Kirby on the procedures or if that was done correctly. And, I mean, this is all Sam's call. I just trying to wrap my head around, are we okay with this? You know, we okay the decision? It's in the aquifer and it wasn't done the way we, we wanted it done. So.
I mean, we, we owe it to our citizens to make sure this is done the right way.
Under interest of health and safety.
Especially with, exactly.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's a big one.
Mr. Chairman, you want to hear from him tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Hey, Chris, do you?
Uh, Mr. Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Chris Kirby speaking. I've listened. I, you know, the, the vault was designed for all the appropriate loadings. And I did, I came out, I inspected the slab, you know, Angelo, the form guy, he did a, they did a fantastic job with the rebar exactly to plan. And I wrote, I did an affidavit, I provided an affidavit and a field report for that. The slab, he, he actually, the whole vault is on ledge. He had to chip out ledge to get to the required elevation. So, it is, I am 100% confident that the work today is per plan and per design.
So, when you hit ledge, did they pin the ledge or was it just a pour over the ledge?
It was a pour over the ledge. It is trapped in there, you know, it's, it's a flat surface. It's not sloping ledge. It's just a flat surface, just like it's on soil.
So, is it, it's hard ledge or is it the shale ledge? Do we know that?
Oh, it's hard ledge. It's like that blue ledge there.
All right.
Yeah, we had to remove, we had to remove a substantial amount of it.
Yeah, but it was that blue ledge that the hammer keeps bouncing off and took us, took us quite a bit.
And also, on the concrete testing, how do you provide concrete testing? You caught it? No, be, Mr. Kirby.
Uh, in the future, for the wall, the, we should have, I recommend provide, you know, taking some cylinders, you know, for one cylinder every 50 yards for the wall pours. You know, so we can do some third party testing on that.
What about the floor? What are we doing for concrete testing on the floor? Was that cord or was that sent out?
We did not take any test cords on the slab, but the concrete company, McCullin, at that time was already poured. So, they gave us all the submittals for the concrete. And pretty much what we used was we.
And T E C was provided with those submittals.
So, I, I think, you know, by the submittals, the concrete company gave us, which was McCullin Concrete, pretty much that's what they went by.
And that's going to be on Sam. That's not up to us.
I mean, I think that's going to be on, on T E C to verify, validate first.
Right, for Sam.
Yeah, and then provides the findings to Sam and the board. Yeah.
Well, when I read statements like T E C made on the number two statement, it does, it is very concerning because they're not responsible for the structural design and then they only got it partially addressed. So, I know and I understand that he's resubmitted things today, but it doesn't necessarily work to submit stuff the day of the meeting, especially when T E C is going to take probably at least two weeks to review it.
When I talked to T E C, they weren't going to put their stamp up for something that they didn't, they didn't witness.
So, that slab that was poured is 18 inches thick and I have a photo of the rebar. It's every, what, eight, eight inches?
Well, it's got two nets and it's every six inches rebar cross.
So, I mean, it's, it's, again, I mean, T C has all this. In the back and forth, they haven't raised that issue. I mean, certainly, Mr. Chairman, you can bring it to their attention and get a specific response to that. If that would be, as far as the language about the structural integrity that they mentioned, that's been in the commentary back when they first started looking at this last year. So, I think they're not, they weren't hired to design the vault. They're just hired to review the plans and make comments.
Which is the design and then.
Review and verify.
Right, to verify that was poured correctly. And it said it right there, vault plans. T E C did not check the vault for structural adequacy and is not responsible for structural design.
Correct.
The first sentence. T E C's.
We were responsible to do that.
Right. Comment was partially addressed. The wall design, steel beam design calculations were attached and reviewed. However, the follow up comments and the calculations are sketch on sheet 12 of 17.
Mr. Chair, that's an old comment. You should be looking at the T E C comment number four, not number two.
All right.
March 28th.
He's looking at the right one. T E C just puts their prior comments and so he was looking at a prior one. The most recent ones on this are the T E C comments number four. You can see they've split it into two. One partially addressed and one comment has been addressed in regards to number two.
The halo reinforcement in the plan is still not called out according to the calculations. Kirby response number two, this was addressed on the comment above. See above. Do we have pictures? I'm curious.
Yeah, I mean, just in general, while, while the pictures are being taken out. I mean, obviously, you know, look to see what T E C says on the, on the next round of comments. For me, one, I would ask that before Sam issues the okay to proceed, that we have T E C in here to issue, you know, to speak on the other quality if they're comfortable with the way things are and if they're, and if they're comfortable with things moving forward.
It's, again, it's not up to us. It's up to Sam, but I agree. I totally agree.
Absolutely. I would, that would just be my, my request. Yeah.
I can see if anyone from T E C will be available that evening.
That'd be great. Thanks, Anne.
Well, we're looking at this. Anybody out there, public comment?
You need to step up to the microphone, please, and.
Yeah, you have to say your name and.
Hey, Darwin. Uh, Dan Johnson. I live at 881 Salem Street. All that water that they're talking about, you know, absolutely runs right behind my house. So, I'm a little concerned about pitches. I don't, I don't take pitches as a, I'm also a contractor and I can't put an underground pipe in the ground without, with a pitcher. And we're talking about thousands of gallons of fuel. If you guys are going to pass this with pitches, I, I, I don't feel comfortable with that. And, and if they're not going to cover the slab, if something happens to this town, who's going to cover this? Who's going to, who's going to pay for the damages to this town?
Well, the tanks are going to be in a concrete vault, so.
I'm not worried about the tanks in the.
It wasn't just photos.
No, I'm just, I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about the tanks. The tanks are fine. I'm worried about the fuel leaking through this concrete and getting into our water system. Like, what, pitches? Like pitches don't, don't cut it for me.
Normally, tanks are installed in sand. This is an unusual thing because.
Our drinking water is right next to it, right?
It's part of the zone two aquifer.
Yeah.
The town did the right thing by requiring that a concrete vault housed the tanks.
I just don't, I just don't see it. You started before permits. Nothing got inspected. You started before permits, nothing got inspected. How do we know it's in that concrete? How do we know it's in the concrete? I don't take pitches lightly on that situation. This is our drinking water we're talking about.
We don't either, unfortunately, we don't have any enforcement through this board. We're just trying, we're just trying to get, get what's going on.
I think it should get started over.
Now, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Chris Kirby. The, the pictures were taken for verification of the physical inspection in the field. I went out into the field in the hole, measured all the rebar, measured the spacing, provided an affidavit that it was installed correctly. And there's even, even one of the TEC comments, one of the first ones, is that there's a water stop in the concrete, the water, the tank's gonna be tested for leakage, you know, all the nine yards. So it's not, we're not just willy-nillying, you know, what we're installing out there. We've put a lot of thought and effort into designing a watertight tank. It's not inspected by pictures, it's been inspected in the field. And an affidavit has been provided for the field inspections.
Well, I think that's our problem is that the people that we wanted onsite to do the inspection while it was happening weren't able to be there onsite as they were required to be there.
I don't know if I wanna take Chris Kirby's word on this.
No, and again, you know, I don't think anyone's questioning Mr. Kirby's competency again.
Yeah, I know, it's just like the right people just haven't been.
But duly known.
It sounded like you just like went and did it and then asked him for forgiveness. It's like, I just don't see this going in the right direction here.
Definitely done, not according to-
You know, like everything else that Groveland thought it was done in the past. I mean, this is just another add-on to the whole situation. I mean, who are we gonna hold caramble for if something happens? The, the, was it TSA?
TEC.
TEC, they, they just waved off all-
Because they didn't witness it.
Right, so who goes, who's next in line?
Structural engineer that designed it has a stamp, and he put a stamp to it.
That's it?
We, we can't give enforcement at the board. I mean, that's not a-
Yeah, no, I'll just go-
We're getting the updates.
We'll go, we'll go to the next round, it's fine, but I just don't see, you know, only, but this is the first one and it just seems like a little bit of a-
I tend to agree, I mean, I'm a little annoyed at the, what was taking place. I mean, we thought we had it, you know, done right, decision, everything was gonna be done correctly.
Yeah, which is when you shut a job down, you shouldn't continue. I don't know, I'm just gonna-
No, when you shut a job down, usually it shut down, it doesn't-
You know what I mean, you just don't move on.
Show up with concrete trucks.
I can assure the board and members and citizens, I mean, this vault is, it is cost over $500,000 to install. So we're not gonna spend that kind of money.
Set up the microphone, please, thank you.
And, and not do it correctly. I mean, Mr. Kirby's reputation is impeccable. If TEC needs a sample of the concrete, we probably can get a sample off the footing or somewhere underneath, so that's still a possibility. But again, it hasn't been raised, if it, if it does get raised, we'll address, we'll address that. And I, I believe that, you know, it hasn't been raised because when they looked at the photos, looked at the narrative of Mr. Kirby, they, they were satisfied that the slab was poured according to the plan and in compliance with all the structural integrity standards. So that's, and I, I have nothing else to go by other than that.
Right, well, again, I think that's the issue, is that neither do we, right?
Excuse me?
I think that's the issue, is that we don't have anything else to go by either, right? You know, because-
Yeah, but that's your peer review, they haven't said anything about the slab, that's all I'm trying to say.
Because they weren't there, is the issue.
Well, I'm sure they could say, well, listen, we looked at the photos, we, we, we looked at the narrative, we're not comfortable-
Right, and again, I mean, I'll be the first one to say, I am not a structural engineer by any, by any sense of the word, right? But looking at what I do for a living, you know, I work a lot, a lot with, with US Customs. And if they ask to inspect something, they don't take my word that it was inspected, they wanna verify that it was inspected. If I do it without them, them verifying it and they are to verify it, they demand to be delivered to make sure that it was done the right way, regardless of what was, what I might validate was done, right? Even if it was done 100% the right, the proper way.
So let me ask you, Chris, let me ask you something. When they pour the walls on top of the, on top of the floor, are you an environmental engineer or just, are you a structural engineer?
Structural engineer.
How do they seal the walls to the floor to ensure if there's a release that it's contained? Because this vault is-
There's a water stop.
Containment, right?
The wall is structural, but there's a water stop that seals the joint, the construction joint between the wall and the floor. That's how we, that's how we create a watertight tank with the water stop, PVC water stop.
How long does the water stop last?
Probably longer than the concrete. It's done, it's, we, we use the same water stop to create watertight tanks for Boston's drinking water. It's, it's a construction industry standard product to create a watertight tank in concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, you know, I don't know that anyone on the board has an issue with the way that the design or plans were drawn up.
No, I just-
Because that was approved, right?
I guess we'll have to wait to see TEC's comments and what they have to say, it's just, I mean, we're, we're gonna be going around and around and around beating a dead horse.
I mean, the resident had a good point.
Oh, he definitely does.
That, the main, well, my, my point is, who is on the hook? If this doesn't, because if TEC was there to do the peer review to watch this pour, TEC is our-
Peer review engineer.
Peer review engineer, so he, it would be on us if something went wrong because we approved everything.
$500,000 will drop in a bucket if you're talking about drinking water.
So right now, who is on, TEC as of right now has not, will not approve the slab, right?
That's the way-
If there were to be a spill at the site, it would be the responsibility of the owner of the land, like any superfund site, if there is a spill.
Okay.
So, period. It's the owner of the land, if there is a spill, it is their fault.
Okay.
I haven't read anywhere where TEC said they won't, they won't approve the slab.
Okay.
My expectation is that with the limited commentary in their last communication on March 28th and our response, which I know you haven't had time to look at, that their review should be completed.
Okay.
I guess we'll wait to hear an update.
Is there any, any other public comment? Before we close, public comment?
Is he gonna have a, I'll just speak up, sure, quick. Uh, is he gonna have an insurance bond on that? Leakage or something possibly happens or?
The question is not on our decision.
It wouldn't be with the plan, it wouldn't be with the planning board. We aren't the authority who would hold that.
I was making sure, is it like, what?
No, I understand-
He's not gonna have the money to clean up a, a gas bill.
No, and we're, again, the town wouldn't be responsible, it would be the responsibility of the homeowner. We hold bonds for things like if a subdivision were to get built and the applicant has homes built and they walk away before the roads finish, we would hold the bond for that road to be built. We wouldn't hold something for like a spill to take place, it's just not really in our wheel, in our wheel-
Will his insurance cover that kind of a situation?
You can buy insurance for that.
As long as he, as long as he does it and holds up. I'm just overly concerned, it's, it's really close, it's in a bad spot, for one thing. It's atop of a hill above our water, you know, so I just wanna make, you know.
That's precisely why the town insisted on a vault for the tanks.
Yeah.
But I know that's a good question, I don't know what the insurance is.
Everybody's word on this.
We have, we have fuel trucks, so when we go in for fuel, we have to have a certain amount of insurance before the terminal will accept us, in case there's a spill in the terminal. I don't know on the site, you know what I mean? The truck isn't gonna look for a insurance requirement when they, they plug in and dump 10,000 gallons. Well, that's on, that's on the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to give the applicant the, further a doubt that he has the proper insurance to operate the site as he tends to operate it, so.
But the insurance company-
Operating and cleaning up a, a gas bill is, that's two different costs. I mean, that could be, who knows how much.
The state or federal government would be the entity that would handle that, not the local government.
That's correct.
Just asking.
And I think to get insurance on the site, you would have a minimum requirement of what you need.
Okay.
Actually, actually, the fact that these tanks are gonna be in a concrete vault will minimize the cost of that insurance, so any, any landowner would be wise to purchase it.
Are they double-wall tanks as well or are they just single-wall tank?
Triple-wall tanks. Those tanks were special ordered, specially designed.
Makes me feel a little bit better.
I mean, I have to assume that the vault is, if it's working properly, it is a better option than putting it above ground, which is where it was supposed to be, right? Because if it spills above ground, then it's, there's nothing containing.
Below ground and sand, which is how most of the tanks are.
Yeah, but not in the aquifer, that's-
I agree, no, I'm just-
So the, you know, you're talking, if you were talking water, you're talking nine pounds a gallon, right? You're talking a 10, 12,000 gallon tank, just do the math on that one. So the floor is a very, very important part of the structural feature.
I mean, it's just-
Well, again, I mean, let's see what TEC has to say.
No, we're gonna, we can't, you know, we have to wait until the-
I mean, this is just, this is an update, I appreciate you coming in, I appreciate you coming in. Um, it's, you know, like I said before, my issue was twice, it was once, twice. And luckily for you guys, Sam is kind enough to allow you to pour, because I, I'm familiar with the concrete. Having those trucks there, that's a lot of concrete that you gotta send back. I think that that probably would've, looking at it now, would've been the better bet because now we wouldn't have to be looking through this and saying, hey, are we sure this is done right? But it's done and we have pitchers, Mr. Kirby's saying, you know, so we'll see what TEC says and comes back with and kinda get a game plan from there, whether there's more testing that has to be for coring to make sure, whatever it is. But I appreciate the update and we'll just have to do our diligence and please, like, communication between you guys, TEC, Mr. Kirby, everyone, so we can not have to worry about this again.
We don't, we don't communicate directly with TEC.
Okay.
It's, Annie.
Has to go through Annie.
Right, okay.
Just understand that, you know, our board is, in the interest of health and safety-
100%.
Just wanna make sure that we don't have any superfunds here, you know, that's-
Absolutely not, doesn't benefit anyone. Thank you very much for seeing us this evening.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, Annie, and thank you for requesting TEC to come in next meeting as well. I think not only for us, but also for the residents to hear directly from TEC. I think that'd be very valuable.
Yep, I'll, um, send them an email tomorrow morning and see, and try to make sure someone from their team can be available for that meeting.
Perfect, thanks. Thank you.
Billis Way, reduction of bond?
Yes, um, this, we kinda jumped the gun with the street approval recommendation and everything. This could've been done before, since we are all set with it. We just need to reduce their remaining bond on the project to zero, because it's, they're done. The road is built, it's built to the highway department standards, highway has signed, I'm repeating myself.
With the track record, should we just wait until the selectmen approve at a town meeting?
Are we sure they're done?
Yeah, because anything could happen, why would we just wait until the town meeting?
As far, as far as our board is concerned, they're done, they have everything that they need to follow.
Correct, there is no reason for us to hold this. All the lumen seed is down, the street has been paved, it's to the highway department standards.
How long did it take them to do this?
There's nothing we can hold it on legally.
How long did it take them to do this?
It doesn't matter, it's done.
Could we just answer the question?
I don't-
Bad on plan.
I don't know, but legally, we have to sign off on this.
For your time.
That's fine, doesn't mean they're not done now.
Just for the sake of it.
I know. We keep two bucks?
Are we reducing or are we releasing?
Releasing.
Releasing.
I'll make a motion to release the bond for Billis Way.
Second.
I reluctantly agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Reluctant.
And happy for the folks at Billis Way, who are finally, hopefully, gonna be voted in at town meeting. Are they officially on the warrant yet or?
They are on the warrant, um, the vote will take place at town meeting, which is the 29th of April.
In a warning if he ever comes back to this board.
So, um, at the end of the meeting, I have the release form, I'll just have you guys sign it so it can get, Al can bring it to the registry.
Minutes, accepted, acceptance of February 6, 2024, the 20th, March 19, 25th, meeting minutes. Anybody read, read them?
I thought we already did. Beautifully written.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes pass. Other items not reasonably anticipated at this time?
Um, I-
Sure.
Microphone, microphone, please.
I can stand up there. Alice Twombly, 91 7 Star Road. I went to see my engineer about subdividing my irregular lot and he said, there's a problem with irregular lots in Groveland. And he didn't wanna draw me up, you know, $5,000 worth of drawings without knowing or having some inclination as to whether it would be accepted or not, so how would I proceed with that?
So I believe there's a calculation that you can work with.
There's a calculation, did you not meet the cap?
I have a U-shaped lot and it was more to do with like where the curb cut is and where the wetlands are and the lot beside me and where my current driveway is and, so he suggested I come and ask you guys if I had a sketch, like if that would be something that you'd entertain. Do you do that or is he like?
So, so there's a calculation that you can do as part of the application process?
The calculation works, but it's, like I said, it's a U-shaped lot, it's-
Have them draw it, we'll take a look at it and see what the calculations are.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there'll need to be an application for us to debate, right?
Well-
Annie's seen this.
You can, um, if you're, I, I know I'd have, I just can't remember what it looks like right now.
I, I know.
Um, if you want, we can schedule another meeting, I, if you want-
So yeah, do I just like come on the schedule? Do you want actual drawings, you want a sketch, you want actual drawings? Just, I'll just like throw out the $5,000 and have them do the drawings and?
My recommendation to the board would be to have this on the agenda as a discussion item, um, and then-
23rd.
On the 23rd, and it can just be a sketch.
Yep.
But just as a simple discussion item, no decisions can be made, but it might be able to give you some guidance.
Guidance, that's what I need is guidance, yeah, uh-huh. Because there's some, some options in there, but what I wanna know is what the planning board would recommend or like to see, actually.
Just a sketch?
Okay.
Got a picture of the plot, you got a plot plan?
Oh, right now?
I have, I have, I have a sketch and I have the plot plan.
We put it on the agenda and then we can have that rough, some type of rough sketch and then we can kinda have a, then we can have a full discussion there and now it's on the-
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And-
You're welcome. Just, just from my knowledge, what was the address?
91 7 Star Road, map 13 lot 4-1-1. Yeah, 4B 1-1. It's like a five and a half acres, but it's shaped like a U, so.
Yeah, it's a new, it's the new, that's the new bylaw, right, with the calculation?
Yeah, we didn't want the red tail lots.
If it matches the calculation, then you'd be good, so.
You have to do, you're doing a common drive, right?
That's the desire, is to do a common drive rather than to have two side-by-sides. I mean, I have 400 feet of frontage, it's just that it's, I don't wanna put my driveway over the other side of the property because of the wetlands being over there and stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I pulled it up on the plot.
So you remember now?
Remembering, yes, exactly.
So are you, I mean, our next meeting is 23rd, right?
Good with the 23rd, yeah.
Alright, so we'll go from there.
Alright, thanks.
No way if there's any neighbors that come in, you know what I mean?
We, we have no problem helping where we can.
I'd just like to-
I hear you.
Do things ahead rather than to jump the gun and go ahead and do something and then find out I did the wrong thing.
No, definitely not, I agree.
$5,000 is the new hundred, isn't it?
No, I think, I think we all agree.
Well, anyway, I'm impressed, I haven't been to a planning board meeting in probably 30 years and, uh, just thanks for what-
You don't wanna come back for another three?
Thank you for what you guys do, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Alice, if you could just send me the plan before next Tuesday, because that's when I'm gonna be posting this agenda and sending them their meeting packets.
Alright. Any other things not reasonably anticipated?
Um, I forgot, I didn't put my town planner update on this, so I'll just scoop it in here. As I had previously mentioned, town meeting is April 29th, a Monday at Bagnell. I don't think the time for that's been determined, but I'll make sure, we'll know by the 23rd, so be sure to mentioning it. so be sure to mentioning it to the board again, because we do have the battery storage system bylaw on the warrant, um, so it'd be good that, if we had a few board members present, if anyone has any questions about it.
You're going to speak to that, right?
Jason, Jason will be there though.